We'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, March 11th, 2025 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're so glad to have you all here in person with us. For those of you who are tuning in digitally, thank you for spending your time with us. At this time, I'd like to welcome forward for our invocation this morning, our Eagle Scout for today, Laine Lutzinger, is going to lead us in our invocation and our pledges will be led by Stephen Behringer from our AgriLife Extension Office. So if you'll please stand. Welcome, Laine.
Our Father, make us trustworthy, for there are those who trust us. Make us loyal, for through loyalty we reach our highest ideals. Teach us to be helpful, for through helpfulness do we forget our selfless, selfness, whoops. Make us friendly, for there are those, for there are so many who need a friend. Train us in courtesy, for courtesy is the carpet on life's floor. Amen.
Amen. Very nice.
If you'll join me in the American pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you, Laine, and thank you, Stephen. Teresa, there's no one who registered for public input. Okay, we'll go ahead and check that out. Let's go ahead and go to item 3A, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing March as Extension Living Well Month and any appropriate action. And I'd like to welcome up our crew from the Denton County AgriLife Department, who would like to come forward. Good morning, Chandy.
Good morning. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude to the Commissioners and Judge Eats for allowing us to present and sign the proclamation for Extension Living Well Month. Your support is truly appreciated. So Dusty and I, with your permission, would like to present to the court a brief overview of some of our program accomplishments. May I?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So since the start of the year, myself along with some Master Wellness Volunteers have led several impactful programs that focused on improving health and wellness in our community. John Corkery, a dedicated Master Wellness Volunteer, led the Health Literacy Series and Master of Memory at the Flower Mound Senior Center. Participants in the Health Literacy Series learned about medication management, finding reliable information on the internet and navigating the basics of Medicare. Master of Memory Program helps older adults build confidence in their memory abilities and reduces the risk factors. In partnership with Little ISD, I am conducting a four lesson series on Cooking Well with Diabetes, and this is the first time they'll be participating, and this is just for the Spanish speaking audiences there. We have had a great turnout, and all of them are learning some practical skills to manage and prevent diabetes. I also presented a workshop titled Cooking Time as part of the Spring Gardening Series at Flower Mound Public Library. Eighty participants created their own personalized salt-free spice mixes and left with practical tools to cook flavorful and heart-healthy meals. Lastly, our most popular fall prevention program, A Matter of Balance, has been exceptionally well received. Since the fall, we have conducted four workshops and recently started at our fifth session at the Denton Senior Center with more than eighty people learning fall prevention strategies. Thank you so much, and I hope all our programs are continuing to benefit our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Dusty Fife. In my role as an Extension Agent, I empower communities through gardening and nutrition education courses, and I also establish new partnerships with schools, libraries, recreations, and senior centers. Over the past several months, I've launched several programs, including Get the Facts at the Colony Senior Center, A Fresh Start to a Healthier You at the Flower Mound Public Library, and Get the Facts is a four-part series that teaches participants how to use the Nutrition Facts panel to make healthier food choices. We place special emphasis on sodium, fats, added sugars, and portion sizes. I am proud to report that we had twenty-one graduates from the program at the Colony Senior Center. A Fresh Start to a Healthier You is a four-part course that provides research-based lessons focused on the importance of healthy nutrition. The program emphasizes increasing fruit and vegetable intake, promoting physical activity, ensuring food safety, and effectively managing food resources. It's been very successful with twenty graduates completing the program. In mid to late February, we started three Growing and Nourishing Healthy Communities gardening courses. One is at the Colony Senior Center, Flower Mound, and Pilot Point Community Library. The six-week class aims to enhance the availability of fresh produce by teaching participants how to grow fruits and vegetables in a community and backyard gardens. As a part of Better Living for Texans, the gardening series covers essential topics including selecting the right garden location, planting and watering techniques, controlling plant diseases and insects, composting, and of course harvesting. To further enrich the learning experience, we incorporate cooking demonstrations that utilize the produce harvested by participants. I am also thrilled to be a part of the Junior Master Gardener Program, which has eighteen enthusiastic students enrolled. The fantastic four-H gardening initiative tailored to grades three to five draws inspiration from the renowned Master Gardener Program. It offers a wonderful opportunity for kids to explore horticulture and environmental science while developing leadership and essential life skills through fun and creative activities. I can't wait to see these young gardeners, what they achieve throughout this amazing journey. Thank you for your time today.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for what you do. Impressive things. So let me go ahead and read this proclamation. This is a court proclamation recognizing Extension Living Well Month, whereas the health and well-being of the family are crucial to the functioning of the nation in providing adults and youth the necessary skills and knowledge to help them achieve the best quality of life possible. Whereas physically, psychologically, socially, and emotionally strong families provide strength for future generations, whereas Extension is a nationwide educational network through the land-grant universities funded cooperatively through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, state governments, and county governments. Whereas Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, Denton County Initiatives in nutrition, healthy lifestyles, food safety, financial management, parenting, and parental health enable citizens to gain knowledge and skills to lead full and productive lives. Whereas Extension offers educational workshops, seminars, publications, and websites to help families and individuals, farms, businesses, and communities. Whereas the designation of Extension Living Well Month is a fitting tribute to the National Extension Association, the Association of Family and Consumer Science Professionals and local staff to provide education critical to the quality of life of adults, youth, and families. Now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Extension Living Well Month in Denton County, and we encourage our residents to take advantage of the educational opportunities that family and consumer science educators of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension offer here in our community. Done in open court, this is the eleventh day of March 2025, upon a motion made by?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? Well, I want to thank you all for all that you do. It's a, you know, I think AgriLife is such an important part of the fabric of what Denton County has been about. We've been a real trailblazer since the beginning of the Extension Service here in the state of Texas. And so I want to thank you all for continuing that rich legacy in each and every one of the lives of the people who participate in it. So, all right, we have a motion to second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. We thank you all. We'll take a picture. All right. Laine, if you'll come forward. I don't know what you're doing.
How you doing, sir?
Well, it's good to see you again. I'd like to go to item 3B, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing Laine Lutzinger for his achievement of Eagle Scout. And I will tell you that we do lots of different court items that come through this court, and one of my favorites to acknowledge people is our Eagle Scouts because of the accomplishments that you're already achieving here at your young age. So we're very excited to have you here. So this is a court proclamation recognizing Laine Lutzinger for his achievement of Eagle Scout. Whereas the mission of Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout oath and Scout law. And Scouts achieve their ranking by fulfilling requirements in areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. And whereas Laine Lutzinger calls Troop 60 Frontier Trails District of the Longhorn Council home, and with ten years of service, Laine has now achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout, which is earned only by the most committed role models in our society. Whereas for Laine's Eagle Scout project, he gathered supplies, handled the funding, and directed fellow troop members in a project to build seven yard shades for a playground area for the dogs at the Lake Dallas Animal Shelter. These much-needed shades provide safe, cool areas for sheltered dogs to play and rest outside. Whereas Laine kindly, patiently, and consistently and generously gave his time to the younger members of the troop and mentored a Cub Scout pack as DIN chief, Laine quietly personifies humble service to others and continues in his mentorship to others. Whereas the Scout Law has twelve points, each of which is a goal for every Scout. A Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. We believe that Laine exemplifies these points and is dedicated to serving others through diligence, integrity, and selflessness. Now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby recognize and congratulate Laine Lutzinger for earning the high honor of Eagle Scout and thanking for her service to our community. We extend our best wishes to him for continued success and happiness. Done in open court, this is the eleventh day of March 2025, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Well, Laine, I want to just commend you for this achievement. And as a father of two Eagle Scouts, I know firsthand the commitment that it takes not only from you as a youth, but also that of your family and the adult leaders that have volunteered their time to promote your desire to achieve this high rank. And so and all the different merit badge counselors and all the people who've been along your journey. It's a, it is a singular award for you, but it also is a, it's a report card on the people that surround themselves and invest in your life as well. And so I want to, I want to commend everyone that took part in becoming, helping you become the fine young man that you are today, and you stand before us. And so when I look out and I see our Eagle Scouts that come through this courtroom over the years, it gives me hope in the next generation that we're going to be those good leaders that will be following and taking our places one day. So I'm excited for you, proud for you, and I'm glad that you're here today. So keep up your public service. I think it's a great project. Do you want to tell us anything that you, what was your favorite thing about Boy Scouts?
Hanging out with my troop, going on all the types of campouts we would do. We would go to like shooting campouts or hiking campouts.
Good.
What I really liked about the trip.
All right. I like it. I like it. Well, good. I'm glad you had some great memories. It's a, it's a good investment of your, of your youth in Scouts. Does it, Commissioner Ebbetson?
Thank you. I know you weren't talking to me this morning, but I was listening to your prayer. And it, it used a lot of the Scout mottos and points of trying to do self-improvement. And I just want to commend you on that because I thought it was very, very good. And as an Eagle Scout, I bet you're carrying a lot of those out, and the Lord is pleased with you.
Anyone else want to make any comments?
Just want to thank you for your service, and we all need a little shade sometimes in our life when we're outside. And thank you about thinking about the animals. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you're doing. And as Diane said, that was a great prayer.
Yeah, very good. Very good.
Well done.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right. Well, great. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. So congratulations. Congratulations. All right, let's go ahead and go to item 14C. 14C is consideration and approval of a bond order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of the Denton County, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bond, Series 2025, Green Meadows Public Improvement District, Major Improvement Area Project, to pay for a portion of the costs of improvements benefiting property within the major improvement area of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1, and approving and authorizing related agreements.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item 14D, consideration and approval of a bond order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of the Denton County, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bond, Series 2025, Green Meadows Public Improvement District, Improvement Area Number 1 Project, to pay for a portion of the costs of improvements benefiting property within Improvement Area G1A, Improvement Area G1B, Improvement Area K1, and Improvement Area P1, the Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1, and authorizing, approving and authorizing related agreements.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, go to 14G, opening and holding a public hearing related to the levy of assessments on property within Improvement Area G1A of Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration and approval of an order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan in Improvement Area G1A assessment role for the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to the property in Improvement Area G1A of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and levying assessments against property within Improvement Area G1A of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Commissioner Precinct 1, and establishing a lien on such property. So, we are requesting a public hearing. So, do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Moved to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak or in favor of or opposed to the proposed action? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the proposed action? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing? A motion to close a public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, do we have a motion for item 14G?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
While you take a quick breath.
Yes.
I just want to thank Jody and, you know, the attorneys here with Denton County for helping put this all together. I know they put a lot of time and energy into it, and they've spoken to me, and appreciate our partners.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. It'd be a larger, meaningful project.
Yes.
Next is item 14H, opening and holding a public hearing related to the levy of assessments on property within Improvement Area G1B of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration and approval of an order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan in Improvement Area G1B assessment role for the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to the property in Improvement Area G1B of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and levying assessments against property within the Improvement Area G1B of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1, and establishing a lien on such property. So, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Moved to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the actions related to 14H? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the actions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Moved to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion to approve item 14H?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14I, opening and holding a public hearing related to the levy of assessments on property within improvement area P1 of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration and approval of an order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan in Improvement Area P1 assessment role for the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, finding, making a finding of special benefit to the property in Improvement Area P1 of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and levying assessments against property within the Improvement Area P1 of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1. Do we have a motion, and establishing a lien on such property? Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Moved to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, we are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to items related to 14I? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Moved to close.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for approval of 14I?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14J, opening and holding a public hearing related to the levy of assessments on property within Improvement Area K1 of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration and approval of an order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan in Improvement Area K1 assessment role for the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to the property in Improvement Area K1 of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and levying assessments against property within Improvement Area K1 of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1, and establishing a lien on such property. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Moved to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the items related to item 14J? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Moved to close.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion in favor of 14J?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14K, opening and holding a public hearing related to the levy of assessments on property within the major improvement area of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration and approval of an order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan, and the major improvement area assessment role for the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to the property in the major improvement area of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, and levying assessments against property within the major improvement area of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1, and establishing a lien on such property. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Moved to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor or opposed to the items related to item 14K? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor or opposed to? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion to approve items 14K?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14L, approval of four agreements for the construction and funding of authorized improvements and reimbursement of advances between Denton County, Texas and the developers of property located within the Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. All right, I think we got everything.
All the green medals.
And...
Yes.
Let me go back to, while we have our guests here, let's go back and do a couple more related. And let's go ahead and do 14B, approval resolution by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting the petition seeking the creation of Village Estates Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 4, and calling for a public hearing to be held at the Commissioners Court, April the first, 2025, meeting in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code and any appropriate action. Motion for approval by Commissioner Ebenson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And let's go to, let's do 14E and F. It's approval of an interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and Smiley Road Water Control and Improvement District Number 2, located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14F, approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and Mustang Utility District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, I think that covers some of those with our guests that are with us today. Let's go back to the, let's proceed forward.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, let's go back to item 2, which is our consent agenda. Members, do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or do we have any items to uphold? Do we have a motion by Commissioner Falconer? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item 2B is approval of payroll. Item 2C is approval of the budget amendment request 100730 for the Elections Administration Department to transfer $500 for administrative supplies to county promotion for additional funding for employee engagement event items. Next, let's go to item 5A, approval of the bill report, payments from CSD Community Corrections TAIP, shares training, shares forfeiture, VIT interest, and DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May, good morning, sir.
Good morning. I have one addition today. This is a payment to the Texas Employment Commission, and the payment is actually being made by United Way from funds that we previously paid to them for the ERA program, and that's all I have.
Perfect. Do we, members, do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebenson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, Jeff. Let's go to item 6A, approval of the bill report on proceeds from the online surplus auction 252843, held in February 2025.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6B, approval of disposal of miscellaneous surplus in compliance with Chapter 263-152A3 of the Local Government Code for disposition of surplus property.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6C, approval or rejection of all proposals for CSP 242808, Joe Kitchen Laundry Stucco replacement.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6D, approval of Evaluation Committee's recommendation to rank Lamstar Engineering as the most qualified firm for the West Shady Shores Road Project under RFPQ 232768, Engineering Design Services and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Ebenson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7A, report for miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. All right, so we'll accept that report. Next is item 7B, approval of budget amendment request 100680 for the Public Facilities Department to transfer $34,000 from Loop 288 Central Plant Gas Service to the Corinth Building, various utility line items to fund utility and sanitation services for the newly acquired Corinth Building and any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7C, approval of budget amendment request 100690 for the Public Facilities Department to transfer $21,000 from Cordusland Square Gas Service to the Cornell Buildings, various utility line items to fund utility and sanitation services for the newly acquired Cornell Street Buildings and the appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item 7D, approval of overtime cash option due to employee shortages and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Ebenson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
I'd like to thank the sheriff for his reports that he's sending us weekly.
Yes, I appreciate those. They're very good. Thank you, Sheriff. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item 7E, approval of budget amendment request 100710 to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for salary assistance and benefits in various operating line items for the Denton County Transportation Authority contract, DCTA, fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $137,584. Chair will move for approval, second by Commissioner Ebenson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7F, approval of budget amendment request 100720 to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for salary assistance, benefits, and various operating line items for the Denton Independent School District, DISD, School Resource Officer Contract in the amount of $137,584.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7G, approval of budget amendment request 100740 for the County Jail to transfer $493,080 from non-apartmental and unoperative contingency, with $480,000 to cash overtime option outside of the budget amendment and human resource policy as recommended by the Budget Office, and $13,080 to out-of-county prisoner expense. Funds are needed due to a shortage of detention officers and to cover the costs of inmates housed at the Cook and Johnson County jails. Motion by Commissioner Ebenson. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 8A, report of human resource regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez?
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in juvenile probation, two new hires in the sheriff's office, one rehired in the sheriff's office, three promotions in the sheriff's office. Those are three detention officers in this mix that are coming to work for the county. We have one new hired in the tax office and four promotions in the tax office. That's it.
Perfect. Good, thank you, Gustavo. Next is item 10A, approval of the final plot of Hummingbird Estates, slots 1 through 3. This is 10.004 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 1.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously. Next is item twelve A, approval of the twenty twenty-five affiliation agreement between the University of Texas at Arlington and Denton County, Texas, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, this is a report from the Denton County Juvenile Board Regarding Inspection and Certification of the Denton County Pre-Adjudication Detention Facility, Impost Adjudication Secure Facilities, and the Suitability of the Quarters and Facilities for the Juvenile Court. This is presented for recording purposes only, but I would like first to go ahead and accept that. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, approval of a resolution of intent to submit an application to the Texas Department of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for Hurricane Burl, and any appropriate action. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A, approval of the first renewal of the agreements for disaster debris removal services, R F P two three two seven eight three, between Denton County, Texas, and the Saris Environmental Services Incorporated as primary contractor, T F R Enterprises Incorporated as a secondary contractor, and Looks Great Services of M S Incorporated as tertiary contractor, as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go through here. Let's go to fourteen M, approval of change order number eight for the statement of work for with Collaborative Solutions LLC for the Enterprise Resource Plan and ERP Software and Implementation Service with no charge in contract value, as recommended by Scott Ards, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Carr, Director of Technology Services, Jeff May, Denton County Auditor, Cindy Brown, Denton County Treasurer, Alejandro Moreno, Budget Officer Gustavo Hernandez, Director of Human Resources. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen N, approval of the purchase of a drainage easement by Denton County, Texas, from Joanna Boyd in the amount of ten thousand five hundred ninety dollars, plus closing costs for the acquisition of zero point zero one six acres. This is six hundred ninety-one square feet, tract of land located in the John Crawford Survey, abstract number two two four, Denton County, Texas, for the Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves as a, which serves a public purpose, with funding to come from Jackson Road Precinct Four, auditor line item eight nine seven four two one nine zero five zero, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen O, approval of the purchase of a drainage easement by Denton County, Texas, from Lee Ann Pace and Dean Pace, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred forty dollars, plus closing costs for the acquisition of a point, zero point five through one acre. This is twenty-one thousand one hundred and twelve square feet of land situated in a William Matthews survey, abstract number eight ninety-one, Denton County, Texas, for the Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose, with funding to come from Jackson Road Project Precinct Four, auditor line item eight nine seven four two one nine zero five zero.
Does all move through, but may I just correct?
Yes.
Twenty-three thousand one hundred and twelve square feet.
Twenty-three thousand one hundred and twelve square feet.
I think you said twenty-one thousand.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Next is fourteen P, approval of the purchase of a drainage easement by Denton County, Texas, from the Thomas Wayland Smith the Third and Amy Smith, husband and wife, in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars, plus closing costs for the acquisition of a drainage easement, number one, being a zero point zero zero eight acres of land. This is three hundred seventy square feet, tract of land situated in the Henry C Bernard Survey, abstract number seventy-four, Denton County, Texas, easement number two, being a zero point zero zero nine acre. This is four hundred square feet tract of land in the Henry Bernard Survey, abstract number seventy-four, Denton County, Texas, and easement number three, being a zero point zero zero six acre, two hundred and eighty-two square feet tract of land located in the John Davis Survey, abstract number three three three, Denton County, Texas, for the Plainview Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose, with funding to come from the Plainview Road Precinct Four auditor line, auditor line item eight nine seven five 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 eight nine zero five zero, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's proceed with item seventeen, which is committee update. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Thank you, Judge. I just want to congratulate our high school boys' basketball team on the six A Division Two State Championship. They won the state, the first championship against Katie Jordan. So congratulations to all those young men and the coach and the school. That's all I've got.
Perfect. Go ahead. Commissioner Falconer?
Thank you, Judge. So we've got a couple of things going on in Precinct Two. We've got in Carrollton CPR and A E D training. It's going to be at the Fire Administration Building in downtown. That's the seventeenth from five thirty to seven. And then in Corinth, the Shamrock Enroll. That'll be on the fifteenth from three to nine at the Commons at the Agora. And then finally, in Frisco, we have the Frisco Festival of Colors. That's on the fifteenth from two to five, and that's at the Practice Fields at Independence Parkway. That's all I've got.
Perfect. Commissioner Mitchell?
And this today, and it's already going on called, no, tomorrow, Call and Coffee, eleven, eleven A M. At the Senior Center in Lewisville, they're still doing the income tax preparation, March fifteenth at Main Street Library, and then we have a Neighborhood Grant Workshop this evening at six thirty to seven thirty P M. In the Jean Carey Animal Shelter and Adoption Center. We have a community beautification event, tree planting on March fifteenth at the Thrive Valley Parkway, Saint Patty's Texas Style, March fifteen, one P M. At one P M. To eight P M. At Wayne Ferguson Plaza. And then the Lake City's Education Foundation is accepting applications for cups, jaws, and vessels, an organization on a mission to create a financially aware and empowered community. That's through Friday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. So if you're a Lake Dallas senior, you can apply, but the deadline is March fourteenth. That's all I have, Judge.
Commissioner Edmondson?
In Haslett, they're continuing to, continuing to read the Rover, so they ought to get their young Eagle Scout because he provides shed for these dogs. Maybe they can read to the dogs. And then they've got a special event that's, I think, interesting, the Pro Tech Truck. It's March fifteenth, ten to twelve, at the Haslett Community Center. This is going to be hands-on activities in the High Tech Truck for the community to enjoy. As I mentioned last week, they're having their Free Scrap Tire Collection Event over in New Fairview, and Breakfast with Tiffany continues at Trophy Club to talk with their mayor. Thank you.
Judge, have been a correction.
Go ahead.
On the cups, jaws, and vessels, the last stage applies March thirty-first. I apologize.
Okay. Perfect. All right, I got a couple of fun things here. This Friday, of March fourteenth at nine A M., our Denton County Master Gardeners Association will host a plant selection class here at the Denton Senior Center. It's open to the public, and we hope attendees select the best plants for their landscape. Sounds fun. And speaking of plants, on Saturday, Memorial Park in Lewisville, they're going to do the tree planting from eight to ten, and this is part of the City of Lewisville's Beautification Events, which is my hometown. Tools and supplies will be provided, so you can do that at the Thrive, gather at the Thrive. It's such a lovely building at nineteen fifty South Valley Parkway. And then Wednesday, next Wednesday, March nineteenth, they're going to have Free Mamogram Clinic at our Denton County Public Health, so be sure to check that out. It's right here at Loop two eighty-eight, screenings for women from forty, ages forty to seventy-four. So you can call our number at eight one seven two eight eight ninety-nine seventy. Again, eight one seven two eight eight ninety-nine seventy to schedule your appointment in advance. Okay, and this is just a little fun fact. Brianna Nix, a mom from Denton, will represent our community on American Idol, and she was chosen as a contestant, receiving a golden ticket to the next round. So we wish her all the best from Denton County to Brianna Nix. So break a leg in Hollywood, so we're glad to have you do that. So let's go. We got a couple of items for executive session. Fifteen A, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property. Close meeting, deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If deliberation and open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of governmental body in negotiations with a third person. Fifteen B, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five A one, personnel matters affecting the county advisory body. Close meeting, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a member of an advisory body to with the North Texas Tollway Authority Board of Directors. And it is nine fifty-eight, and we are in executive session.